Okay, it is 4:34 and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Today's date is Monday, October 28th, 2024. Ms. Anna, will you establish quorum, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garza.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Gerlach.
Present.
Councilman Albert Fovena.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we gather today with grateful hearts, remembering the men and women who have served our country in bravery and self-sacrifice. We ask that you watch over all veterans, giving them peace knowing their efforts are not forgotten. We pray for the safety of those still serving. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may sit. Okay, the next item is disclosures of conflict of interest. Ms. Anna?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Protem Plata has one on file for executive session, item number two, regarding black dining.
Okay, thank you so much. Next item are our presentations, and I'm gonna move things around a little bit, so I'm gonna go to number seven. Idallo County Precinct Three, update on drainage projects.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. How are you doing today?
Very good.
Well, I have a very good announcement to make. There's a lot of great things happening in Precinct Three, but today I just wanna touch on the other things that are happening and projects that we have in the city of Mission that not too many people know about. The first of them is Los Evans Road Expansion. I'm happy to announce that through the MPO, we were able to receive $4 million in partnership with the city of Mission, and this is an amazing partnership that we did with Mission to expand that road that is gonna mirror the Taylor Road, and I just wanna congratulate the mayor and the commission for that amazing road that immediately had a positive impact on our families, our businesses, so it's an amazing road. We're trying to duplicate that here, and those $4 million would have not been possible without a solidified effort on our behalf. The other one is our hike and bike trip that we have here in Precinct Three that joins Mission. When we were going through these plans, I made it a point to include part of the subdivisions in Mission, so it's gonna have an amazing impact on our families that are gonna be able to use these hike and bike trails to exercise in a safely manner. Another amazing thing that's happening in 485 and Morefield, we're also gonna build a brand-new clinic for our residents here in the Mission and Mission surrounding areas. That's gonna be an impact of about $3.6 million and at no cost to the city of Mission or local tax dollars. The other great thing that I wanna tell you all, in the same area, we're working on building a wellness sport complex center similar to what Precinct Two and now Precinct One have, and I'm very excited and happy for my other precincts, but it's time that our Mission area, Precinct Three, gets on the ball and gets our families to exercise, be healthy, and this is all gonna be in the same area, so we're gonna make it compact and so everything could be close to each other. The other one is our pavilion, as you know, on Inspiration. We're doing a full makeover with air conditioning. A lot of our residents here in Mission use it, and it's gonna be an amazing thing for our community, so I wanna thank the city of Mission. You know, a lot of these projects could not be possible without your support. I really appreciate your support, and I can tell you, as your county commissioner, I will continue to support my city here in Mission, and I am very excited in the future that we're gonna have. So, thank you so much. I would like to introduce Raoul Cessin, our director for Drainage District.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. Raoul Cessin, Idallo County Drainage District One, general manager. Appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on what we're doing here in the Mission area, Precinct Three area, to impact the residents of this area regarding to drainage. So, just for the benefit of the public, the board of directors is made up of the judge and four commissioners. We are a separate tax entity than the county, but we work hand-in-hand with the county when it comes to various issues, especially drainage. We see ourselves sometimes as the county engineers. The commissioners ask for us to look at different things, but one of the primary functions of the Drainage District is to focus on drainage. This is our Drainage District map. As you can see, you know, we serve geographically half of the county, however, population-wise, we serve 90% of the urbanized area of the county, so a lot of the outfalls from our city systems enter into our system, and then we carry it out into either through the Laguna Madre area or through the IBC floodways. Those are really the primary areas that we, only areas we have are systems that we have available to take water out of our area. Right now, I'll cover kind of a brief overview of the 2018 and 2023 bond projects, which are the primary projects that identify drainage that we've been doing district-wide, focused on the Precinct Three area. This is a 2018 bond project in 33-quarter mile road, Schubach Road. It was a new system, basically tied into our Linda Vista drain. There was some issues in the past when we had the heavy rains event, so this is a project that was identified, and this project was completed in 2021, November 2021, so that's already in place. Creates outfall for existing communities in that area of residents, but also provides opportunity for growth in that area as well. Other project, as a very, very important project for the heart of the city of Mission is Mission Lateral. Mission Lateral initiates basically in McAllen at Benson Road, but then when you get to Taylor, it starts Mission, and it goes all the way west, all the way to Abram Road, and that watershed actually extends very vast north, and a lot of that water comes through the system through the Palmview Lateral, enters into the Mission Lateral, and then eventually into what we call the Mission-McAllen drain. We'll cover that here in a minute, but as you can see, we've completed several phases of that widening that have fared very well. In 18, we had a lot of challenges in that Mission area, especially in the Taylor Road area, Benson area, and then in 2020, we had Hurricane Hannah. There was minimal impact, if not zero, impact in the area because we had already started that project and had done a lot of widening already within those sections, so we have aerial footage where the water is contained within the channel banks and didn't back up into the residence and so forth, so we have, we're very, very proud of that improvement, and it was tested and it fared well during Hurricane Hannah. We do have also the regentential facilities that I'll cover here in a minute, west of here, that even though they're located in the Minnesota Road area and so forth, is a way to manage that water. As I mentioned, that watershed goes all the way to Abram Road, so that water is coming. So, our project is not only to expand the system, but also create regentential facilities to be able to manage that water better and be able to move that water as the system starts to alleviate itself, move it downstream. One of the big projects that Commissioner Mier Rial was part of, worked closely with his office, was the RDF there on Inspiration Road, Morefield Road in that area, his crews, we worked closely together to widen that system, which is on the Inspiration Road just east there, there were some challenges, especially heavy rain events in the past that the city had experienced, so Commissioner mobilized in there. We were able to put those plans together, and he was very instrumental in creating that RDF that's currently existing in place there that provides a lot of relief to that area, so that project's already existing, and again, that was through the efforts of the Precinct Three. This is just a visual of the different sections that I pointed out right now. As you can see, Phase One, Two, and Three have been completed. We are working with Tech dot on the crossing of what we call Phase Five, their crossing of Conway Road. There is a project that we're working with right now with them to be able to carry that water across, and then you can see Phase Four, and then the RDFs that we're looking west of there, the one that I mentioned in Minnesota, that is forthcoming. We are looking at doing that system. We're in the acquisition phase of land, and once that's fully completed, we'll be investing in that area to manage that water as it comes into the system to better manage it going east. Next project's our Palmview Lateral, which again, it is in the Palmview area, but all that water does come east into the Mission area, so as I mentioned, we do have some projects outlined in that area. The 2018 and 2019, we are prior for GLO funding, and we're granted a million dollars each, so with that money, we're gonna be investing in channel improvements and RDF in that area as well to help us manage the water better. We have our Tierra de la Drain. This was another partnership, what they had with the city and the precinct. There was a lot of challenges in that area, as you can see, when we had the heavy rain events. Because of the limited outfalls in that area, there was a channel in place, but the limited crossings did not allow for the water to move efficiently. I know Commissioner had a gathering down in the pavilion area, had an outreach for the community and before his renovation started there, and we were able to move together with precinct to develop these plans. We developed these plans in-house and then worked in-house together with the precinct to do the improvements, and you can see the crossings that we put in place as well. There was also widening to the east and north of that system, the Tierra de la Drain, east of Inspiration and north all the way to the expressway, so there was a trepizoid section that existed, and it was created with benches to create more volume and also facilitate some maintenance of the system, but all that's in place already, which provides a better outfall for that whole populated area that you can see there. And that representation that you see there, some of the color coding of the reduction of flooding areas that were reduced with the improvements that are in place, so it's a very positive benefit to that area. The Mission-McAllen drain, this is, as I mentioned, the drain that runs east of Benson, parallel, runs north and south. As the water crosses Benson Road and Mission Lateral, it actually splits and runs north and south, so we're improving sections going north, improving sections going south as well to help better manage that water as it comes across the Benson Crossing that exists right now. You can see right now, there's several phases that we have still under construction, some are going out already for construction, and then we have anticipated completion dates listed there as well, so that's a whole area impact that helps also the community of And this is just an exhibit of the different phases. You can see Phase One, Two, Three, and Four of the Mission-McAllen drain that is being improved to help the city. We also have the Alterno-Redo Drain, which is a southern section, south of 495, Pecan Boulevard, and that section goes all the way across the expressway. That's one of the areas that we had a lot of challenges before. There's a big drop south of 83 all the way to the expressway. There are two weirs there. Those weirs basically are there to hold water back because it's such an abrupt drop. As soon as you cross Benson and go south, it's a very, very steep drop. We don't normally see these type of drops. And our area is very flat, but if you go out there, you'll see the drop. So, we're creating some detention in that area within existing right away that we have to better manage the water. South of the express, we already installed a parallel box as part of the 18 bond project that's already in place into the Mission Lateral. That's already in place in existing of an arch plate box that we had in place. We work with the school district, Sherland School District, they were gracious in working with us to grant us the easement that we needed to run a parallel box to that existing arch plate that's in place, so that's already in place, so now we're working here in this area going north. As I mentioned, when the water splits and comes south, we're gonna be able to better manage that water during the rain events. We have our Mission Inlet, which is a southern section, and this Mission Inlet, again, is a tremendous watershed. It does run all the way up to the Pettisville Drain, west of Inspiration, all the way up to Abram Road and the expressway. All that water that crosses the expressway at Abram ends up here, so it's a massive watershed that takes in a lot of water, and it takes in a lot of water from the southern side of Mission, all the way actually southern far as well in McAllen. The airport is located right there as well, so it serves a big, big area of our community, and those improvements have been in place in some areas between 23rd Street West have been improved. We're looking at improving also east, looking at improving the connection from our Mission Inlet, enters into the IBC floodway. That's part of the 2023 bond to improve that connection, to better lower the water surface elevation in the Mission Inlet to better manage that water as well. We are looking at the areas that we can release. That's one of the big conversations. Once we develop the Mission Inlet in place, there's areas that we can release for further development, and we're working with the landowners and legal counsel to make sure that everything is done correctly, so when that area is released, it can be further put on the tax roll for development as well. We're working the city of Mission on that as well. West of Conway, there's a lot of activity there, and between Conway and Sher, there's opportunities as well to look at, so we are in conversations with landowners regarding what is needed for that release to occur. That's, in a nutshell, our presentation. Mayor, city council members, this is our contact information, and I apologize, in the audience, I do have Ms. Yvette Barrera, who is the project, basically the PM for the projects in this area in Mission. She's one of my assistant GM. I do have another assistant GM, Omar Asaldua, did not make it, and my chief of staff, but this is the contact info. Any questions you may have regarding the presentation and just in general, district-wide activity that is taking place, please reach out. You can reach me directly, my mobile's there or via email, whatever. Anything comes up, we're definitely available for any questions, so anything that I can answer here while we're here.
Great, thank you so much. It was a great presentation, and y'all are doing an amazing job. Thank you.
I just have one question. Do you still have that interactive program on the drainage?
We are, so we're taking that in-house. What we're doing now is we're gonna manage the dashboard in-house, that's what we call it, 2018 dashboard that gives you transparency, and that's always our goal, to put that before everyone so they can be able to see the progress of our projects, how much we invested, so we're taking that over in-house, we're transitioning into that, and we're also gonna have a 2023, and our ultimate goal is to have both of them running together, and that's in the works right now.
And where can the public see that on your website?
On our website. If you go to our website, acdd1.org, there you can be able to click on the dashboard and be able to look at where the projects are and the status of each project.
I think that's really important for the public because they can just go to their website, and they can look at, and they can click, and they can get an update of where they are.
Exactly.
Can we get, can we take your presentation and put it on our website?
Yes, of course. Welcome to do that.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next item, we're gonna move up to number one, which is a proclamation, municipal court week.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, city manager's office. We come before you today to seek a proclamation to declare November 4th through the 8th, 2024 as municipal court week. The proclamation reads, "Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court, whereas the procedures of the Mission Municipal Court operations we've set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas, whereas the municipal court serves as the local justice center for the enforcement of local ordinances and fine-only state offenses that protect the peace and dignity of our city. And whereas the city of Mission is committed that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas the Mission Municipal judges and our support personnel have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all and conform to the standards set by the canons of judicial conduct, now therefore being resolved by the city council of the city of Mission, Texas, at the week of November 4th through the 8th, 2024, is hereby recognized as municipal court week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the municipal court of Mission, proclaimed on this the 28th day of October, 2024."
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to introduce that I'm proud today to be joined by Judge Avielle Flores, Judge Anthony Ortega.
Hi, a pleasure to meet you.
Court Administrator Janie Gomez, and court personnel Nora Gonzalez, Kayla Trevino, Raquel Vargas, and Estela Flores. They all do a great job, and I really appreciate all their service.
And your prosecutor?
And, oh, sorry.
He needs no introduction.
Thank you, thank you.
That's what it is.
Everybody who's called us.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna do a couple more proclamations, and then we'll take the pictures.
Okay, very well.
Okay, so don't go away, in other words.
We won't go away.
Okay, thank you. The next one is the National Code Compliance Month. Ms. Deluna?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council.
I want to introduce the Code Compliance Proclamation, which reads as follows. "Whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety and welfare of our citizens throughout the United States throughout the enforcement of local codes and ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated and high-qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values throughout knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas the American Association of Code Enforcements wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers and professionals all across the United States and bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement to the communities of the United States. And now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Mission, proclaim the month of October, 2024, as National Code Compliance Month, and call upon municipalities and communities to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers, proclaim on this the 28th day of October, 2024."
Okay.
I'll so move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
I would like to present my code enforcement staff.
Yes.
I'll start with Joseph Flores, code enforcement officer. Angel Garcia, code enforcement officer. Idrasema Dimas, code enforcement supervisor. Nancy Chavira, code enforcement officer. Yvette Villarreal, code enforcement clerk. Senior Code Enforcement Officer, Arturo Lerma.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we'll do the same, so don't go away.
I know we have all this many of, I always just give calls about Idrasema, but thank you for that. Take it as a compliment. Yes, take it as a compliment. I think it's so important that you enforce the city ordinance.
Okay. Hi, Ruben. Okay. The next proclamation is Community Planning Month. Ms. Luna.
Now if I can have my planning staff. Okay, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas changes a constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, bureaus, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Mission. And whereas we recognize that many valuable contributions made by the professional community and regional planners of the City of Mission and extent our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, proclaim the month of October, 2024, as Community Planning Month, proclaim on this, the 28th day of October, 2024.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. The proclamation is read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Now let me present to my planning staff. My Assistant Planning Director, Alex Hernandez. My GIS Analyst, Tricia Martinez. My Administrative Specialist, Jessica Muñoz. My Administrative Assistant, Elisa Surita. And my Subdivision Coordinator, Gable Ramírez.
Thank you very much. Okay, now y'all stay there. We're gonna go down and then we'll get some pictures taken. I know Chief Torres isn't here, so who's doing the? Chief Perez, all right.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Assistant Chief Perez, I would like to read this proclamation. I have a crime victim, Gaysan Isella Marine, and also Mr. Ruben Pequeno from the Adalba County District Attorney's Office, the Violent Task Force. This proclamation is declaring October 24 as domestic violence awareness, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that violates a person's privacy, dignity, and security. It's a pattern of behavior in any relationship that is used to gain or maintain power and control over an intimate partner by using physical, emotional, sexual, and financial control. And whereas the consequences of domestic violence are extensive, impacting not only those directly affected, but also the broader community, both within our local area and globally, causing long-term physical, emotional, and social harm. And whereas the Mission Police Department, in partnership with the local organizations and agencies, is dedicated to raising awareness about domestic violence and the resources available for victims, aiming to provide support and education to the public. And whereas we invite everyone to participate in awareness campaigns that educate the communities about the signs and consequences of domestic violence. You are welcome to wear any purple accessories or attire during October, symbolizing peace, courage, survival, honor, and personal dedication to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We need everyone to start together and fight against domestic violence and support those who are affected, that have been affected. And whereas survivors of domestic violence have courageously taken the lead in advocating for safety and justice within their home. It is crucial that we no longer view domestic violence as a silent epidemic, but confront it and work together to eradicate it. Now therefore, we proclaim the members of the Mission City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Mission, do at this moment declare October, 2024, to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to actively participate in scheduled activities and programs to work towards eradicating domestic violence, improving victim safety, and ensuring that those who commit acts of domestic abuse are held accountable for their actions against individuals in our communities. Proclaim this 28th day of October, 2024.
Mayor, I'm moved to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you.
Mrs. Zella would like to say a few words.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. As Assistant Chief Perez already told us, domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior and regardless of the age, race, sexual orientation, gender, nationality, it's a epidemic that we need to be fighting for. If you or someone that you know is in an abusive relationship, please call, contact your local PD, or please get ahold of the Domestic Violence Hotline, which is 800-799-7233. Please get involved and raise awareness about domestic violence. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Few words?
Yes, please.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the invite. On behalf of the Adalba County Criminal District Attorney's Office, we want to continue this fight against domestic violence. It's an epidemic that we need to continue, make our citizens aware of it. It's not only a partner epidemic, it's a family. It can be a grandfather, grandmother, uncle, tia, tio, nieto. It's a family thing, so we need to get ahold of our kids, our children, and start making them aware of this ugly epidemic of domestic violence that we're fighting for so they can go ahead and be our future or change. Again, thank you for the invite and let's keep pushing forward and break this cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. I knew if y'all would come up this time for the picture. The next item is our proclamation for Veterans Day.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. I'm pleased to have Mr. Polo Garza and members of the Marine Corps League of the Rio Grande Valley with us today. If they'd like to step up. We also have members of our Mission Police Department with us. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the City of Mission recognizes the one-year anniversary of Remember Everyone Deployed, RED, and the Marine Corps League of the Rio Grande Valley. Whereas we are pleased and honored that the City of Mission City Council will pay tribute to the dedicated veterans who have served this great nation with such distinction, both in peacetime and in war. Whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in the defense of the freedom which we all enjoy today. Whereas in honor of those dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifices will stand before the entire world as a tribute in the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, invite all veterans to participate in our upcoming Veterans Day festivities on November 9, which will be the Veterans 5K Day Run, the Veterans Day Parade, and barbecue, and festival. Proclaimed on this, the 28th day of October, 2024.
I'm moved to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as presented for Veterans Day. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe you all want to say a few words?
Mayor and City Council, on behalf of the Marine Corps League of the Rio Grande Valley and veterans, City of Mission, we want to thank you for your initiative last year to support to bringing the Red Campaign to the City of Mission. I can proudly say, and all of us from Michigan say, that Mission is the only city in the state of Texas that has made a proclamation for the Remember Everyone Deployed. So we can pat ourselves on the back. But thank you for your support. If it wasn't for your initiative, we wouldn't have had this campaign. It's the first city in the state of Texas.
There you go.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your support of the veterans in City of Mission and the valley.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go down there to get a picture.
You good?
We're good.
Oh, do you want this to show? We can do that. Okay, the next item is our Employee of the Month for September.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we are presenting to you our Employee of the Month for September, Mr. Jesse Mardes, our Facility Main and Supervisor. I'd like to ask him to please join me up here. He was nominated by Chief Torres. Chief Torres couldn't be here today, but his nomination reads as follows. Mr. Mardes consistently responds to the needs of the Mission Police Department. He not only responds timely with requests in which we are providing advance notice, but just as timely with requests in which we have provided him a short notice. His attention to detail is superior, and this has allowed the Mission Police Department to continue functioning without interruption. Not only does he ensure the task is completed, but he does so with a positive attitude and is always willing to assist where and when he is needed. Although Mr. Mardes has citywide responsibilities, he immediately answers our calls and assists us. In addition, he provides feedback to remedy potential problems. The city is blessed to have a supervisor that cares for the city and his coworkers. Thank you, Mr. Mardes, for all you do on a daily basis and for being a team player. We appreciate you and the outstanding service you provide to our departments. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jesse. You want to say something, Jesse?
I'm just happy, proud to work for the City of Mission. You know, I graduated in 2003 and went to SCC and this was my first job. You know, it's been 17 years working here, so I'm happy about it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, the next item is a presentation by our historical museum. Ms. Cindy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the Mission Historical Museum Board and Staff, we are excited to invite the community to our annual Dia de los Muertos Folk Life Festival on November 2nd from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Mission Historical Museum. As part of the festival, we also invite you to view our Community Altar Exhibit, featuring altars created by local organizations and community members. The exhibit includes a special remember-me room where visitors are encouraged to write the name of a loved one on a card and place it within the room. We want to extend a special thank you to the Spear Memorial Library Children's Department staff for creating stunning papier-mache decorations. Their creativity has truly brought the space to life. Equally, we are fortunate to have the participation of members of various local Girl Scouts of America troops in which the museum sponsored a Dia de los Muertos merit badge for their contribution of menial frentas. Students from the Mission High School Art Club contributed their talents in the form of uniquely painted skulls, complementing the interpretation of art by José Guadalupe Posada, which inspired the aesthetic of the exhibit. For those who may not be able to attend in person, a digital version of the exhibit can be viewed on our website at missionmuseum.org. We look forward to celebrating with you and hope to see you there. And with me today, I have Ms. Diana Cosette, our board member, and Amacio Chapa. He's on our board as well, and some members of the Girl Scout troops who participated, and we want to present them with their merit badge today.
Oh, nice. Well, congratulations, girls. Y'all want to say something? Want to come up to the... No? No, you don't? Don't be shy.
I did one for my grandpa and one for my grandma.
Okay, and what is your name?
Alayda Hayes.
And your grandma and grandpa's names? Grandma and grandpa? Okay, that's okay. That's okay. That's all right. Okay, thank you. Okay.
I did one for my grandpa. Victoria Flores.
Very good. And your name?
Victoria Flores.
But your name?
Victoria Flores.
Oh, Victoria. You're named after your grandpa, kind of. Yeah, okay, very good.
I love that.
Very good. Okay, we're going to go down there to take a picture with you.
And I just want to give a special thank you to Yvette Moreno, who is one of the Girl Scout troop leaders, and she helped me organize all the Girl Scouts to participate in this event. And she's here with us today.
Very nice. Yes, yes. The next item is a report from Rio Grande Valley Humane Society.
Hi.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. Nice to see you all again. So for the month of September, we competed in a return-to-home challenge with best friends. The animal control officers and Health Director Steven helped us with this, and we received a $5,000 grant for returning over 40 animals back to their homes.
Great. Awesome. Congratulations.
And then we are currently also hiring animal control techs. If you know anybody interested in joining us, they can apply on Indeed, or in person, or on our website. For our low-cost vaccine clinic for September, we had 134 pets served. That is Mission residents and a few surrounding residents as well. They come to Mission, they stay here, they eat, they shop. It all works out. For September, our save rate was 82.5%. Our intake number was 133 animals adopted. We had 75 reclaimed, 16 transferred to rescue, 16 returned to field, one died in our care, nine unithanized, 15. For the month of October, we have six adoption events that have been planned. Most of them have already taken place since we're at the end of October already. But we are planning our next low-cost vaccine clinic for November 23rd. Registration will open on the 1st of November. That is low cost to all residents of the valley, and we welcome you all to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is our chamber. Ms. Brenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Manager Mike. Wonderful activities happening at the Mission Chamber of Commerce. We've got lots of ribbon cutting scheduled as we wrap up the calendar year for the business community. November 7th, we do have two ribbon cuttings scheduled. The first one will be at 10:00 in the morning for TNT Automotive Specialists. They're off Quica de la Garza. The one at 2:00 will be ribbon cutting for Serenity Flowers and Gifts. November 8th, we do have another ribbon cutting at 5:00 for RGV Learning Institute. And November 13th, we have a lunch and learn. It's complimentary for our members and then a small fee for any non-member, but they can join us for lunch and learn more about Our Lady of the Lake University on the topic of leadership and organizational development. And on November 15th, we do have another ribbon cutting for the Loretto Plaza. So we'll be doing the grand opening for the plaza, and we're going to be celebrating 10 years of the Loretto in City of Mission. So we're excited about that. I'd also like to inform our community that we officially launched a podcast. The Chamber will be doing a podcast once a month. October was the first one. We just rolled out the new one for November. And the name of our podcast is Commerce Conversation, so we do invite somebody from the community to come in and we get to know them on the business, topic of business. And we're available on Spotify, Apple Podcasts, and YouTube. So please follow us. And our upcoming events, we do have a reminder, we do have our annual appreciation member breakfast at 9:00. We will be having Chi Lucky List, so we hope everybody can join us. And then our upcoming signature event is the Health Fair, the Annual Health Fair scheduled for December 5th and 6th. And it will take place at Mission Event Center, and the sponsor booths are now available, so anybody in the community that wants to join us, please give us a call. That's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is our departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Is there, are any questions or comments on that?
I'm going to approve the reports as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the departmental reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is citizens' participation. Nothing? Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to public hearing, and the first item is a rezoning request.
Mayor and Council, City Manager, item number 13 is a rezoning for a 1.02-acre tract of land, more or less being all of the existing 70-foot strip of United Irrigation District Canal Right-of-Way between Lot 40 and 41. Bellwoods Company Subdivision. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Enthusium to R2 duplex, fourplex. The applicant is DS3 Development in care of Dina Salinas. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 579 feet east of North Prospero between Lots 40 and 41 of Bellwoods Company Subdivision. The property measures 70 by 635 feet. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north and south and duplex, fourplex to the east and west. Existing land uses is vacant. The future land use map shows this area's low-density residential. The proposal does not comply with the city's future land use map. However, it complies with a fairly new existing surrounding land uses. Staff notes that the future land use map can be amended to reflect the proposal. Staff mailed out nine notices to property owners within 200-foot radius of the site to solicit comments in favor or against the request. As of this write-up, staff has not received any comments. Staff and P&amp;Z recommended approval. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone online? Okay. Are there any questions, discussion? Or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do have a question. So this is, this is a, it's actually just a canal right-of-way? Is that correct?
The property is already zoned. The surrounding properties is part of the development.
Okay.
They were, this property used to belong to the United Irrigation District, and it was just recently acquired, but it was not zoned.
Okay, and that was going to be my question. So it has been acquired by the owner?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All righty, so there's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning as requested. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is a conditional use permit.
Item number 5560.
55 what? 60. Yes, it's on here. Like real bold letters. Okay. 5560. Okay. Next item.
Item number 14 is a conditional use permit to place a mobile food truck, Cafe Allegro, at 1,001 East Griffin Parkway. This is out of a .54 of an acre tract of land being a portion of Lot 25-10 West Addition to Sherland. It's currently zoned C1 office building, and the applicant is Jonathan Morales. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 300 feet east of East Palm Circle along the north side of East Griffin Parkway. The applicant is leasing an area within the Picasso Chiropractic Clinic to place Cafe Allegro mobile food truck. He plans to offer a variety of coffees and pastries. This operation will only be for pickup and go. Access to the site is provided off of Griffin Parkway through an existing 22-foot concrete driveway. Days and hours of operation on Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and is closed on Sundays. He's proposing to have two employees. For parking, there's a total of eight parking spaces available that will be shared among the two businesses. The chiropractic clinic operates by appointment only. The applicant will be required to add additional landscaping. Staff and P&amp;Z recommend approval subject to a warning reevaluation to continue to assess the operation, compliance with all city codes, acquisition of a business license, and CUP not to be transferable to others. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve. I just have a question. About additional landscaping. What does that entail?
They have very limited landscaping, so they are going to be required to install some trees along the front and some plants along the front of the business.
But what do we require? I mean...
Normally, it's a tree per every 60 feet of frontage. So the property owner is aware. They used to have plants, but they were, they died, so they have to replace it.
Yeah, this is for Dr. Picasso. Who's the property owner?
He is aware.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that is ordinance number 5561. And that is the...
Congratulations, Jonathan. There's Jonathan right there.
Okay, hi.
Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations. Good luck. So that was the end of our public hearing. The next item is consent agenda, and those are items number 15 through item number...
26.
26.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the items numbers 15 through 26 on consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay, item number 27.
Item number 27 is a preliminary plat approval for Tanglewood at Benson Palm Phase 5. This is a tract of land containing 11.688 acres being out of Lot 14, Del Monte Irrigation Company Subdivision. It's currently zoned PUD R1, which is single-family residential. The developer is Road Enterprises, Inc. The engineer is Melvin and Hunt. The subdivision is located 150 feet east of intersection of Falcon Drive and King Fisher Lane with a continuation of Falcon Drive. The developer is proposing 42 single-family residential lots. They will have city water, city sewer. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff, P&amp;Z and staff recommend approval subject to payment of capital-sure recovery fees, provide water district exclusion, conveyance, or payment of water rights. This item is now before you.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Tanglewood at Benson Palm Phase 4. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item.
Chief. Good afternoon. The Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to enter into MOU with the Mission Doctors Group for the purpose of clarifying the registered nurse's role and expectation for the police department as it applies to the blood search warrant process and grant activities for the newly awarded techs are granted. This agreement outlines the responsibilities and abilities for the, for both agencies. This agreement will be in effect upon approval for one year. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Okay. More for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the City of Mission Police Department and the Mission Doctors Group. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. The next item?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I have two items for you this evening. The first one is item number 29. It's the installation, is authorization to reject bids for the purchase and installation of golf ball protective netting. On August 26, 2024, City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for the purchase and installation of golf ball protective netting for the all-inclusive Lyons Park. City of Mission accepted and opened three bid responses, one of which was deemed unresponsive. Staff is seeking authorization to reject all bids received due to the fact that bids received were over budget. Purchase and installation of protective netting will be considered via change order with the contractor. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve the rejection of the bids.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reject the bids for the purchase and installation of golf ball protective netting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item.
Agenda item number 30 is approval of change order number one for Lyons Park Improvements Project and approval of respective budget amendment in the amount of $101,120.27. Change order includes additional scope of work requested by the City of Mission to include extension of electrical service as per AEP at a cost of $12,770.27. Addition of ceramic wall tile to Buildings A and C at the cost of $11,200. Zip line repair, zip line item repairs at a cost of $8,500, and protective netting at the installation cost of $68,650. Staff recommends change order number one for the total amount of $101,120.27. This comes with an additional 45 calendar days to change order. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Okay, are there any questions, or...
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve change order number one for Lyons Park Improvements. All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
So it's a 45 days from, from today?
Well, the end date actually figuring it will, is determined to be December 8th.
Mr. Garcia, go ahead, sir. Thank you, sir.
December what? Seven?
Eight.
Eight. Okay. Thank you. Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number thirty-one, consideration approval of resolution number... To use unspent lease proceeds to prepay the 2021 lease agreement, purchase agreement for the purpose of reducing its annual payments and all other costs associated with a transaction, including paying any arbitrage rebate liabilities to the U.S. government. The city had entered into a Public Property Finance Act lease purchase agreement on March 25th of 2021 with PSI relating to the financing of the acquisition and installation of, installation of personal property for the city. On March 25th, the initial lister assigned all of its grants, all of its rights, title and interest in and to lease purchase agreement, the escrow agreement, the personal property and the acquisition fund to First Security Finance, Inc., on March 31st, 2020 fund. First Security Finance assigned all of its rights, title and interest in and to the LPA, the escrow agreement, the personal property and the acquisition fund to the Capital One Public Fund, LLC. The city and the lesser desire to amend the LPA and the escrow agreement with prior written consent of Build America Mutual Assurance Company. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mr. Villarreal? Would you like to give them a briefing on this?
Bobby Villarreal is our financial advisor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Perez. Again, Bobby Villarreal with Estrada de Rosa. Like was mentioned before, if you see in the packet that you have there, going forward, you were making an annual payment of about a million four till 2037. By using these unused proceeds and just prepaying the debt, now you're gonna go to about $603,000 a year. So essentially, that gives you a cash flow of about 800 and some thousand improvement for the maintenance operation side of the business for the city. So we believe it's a win-win for the city just to move forward and, and, you know, alleviate some pressure on the MNO side.
Yes, so all ties will be cut. Is that correct, pretty much?
Well, I mean, I'm not...
Yes, all ties will be cut.
Okay, okay, great.
So that is 603,000 is the interest and principal on what is the balance?
Right now, the balance is about nine. Going forward.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number 1928. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. So I just wanna reiterate that the payment from 1.4 million, an annual payment from 1.4 million dollars, has been reduced to $603,000, so...
Correct. And then the interest difference for the next 12 or 13 years would be about a million six, better than had it just stayed the same.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, next item is Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Item thirty-two is authorization to cancel the city council meeting scheduled for November 25th, 2024, and this is being requested to accommodate for the upcoming holiday. If a special meeting is needed, it will be held, and we're just seeking council direction.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve the cancellation of meeting scheduled for November 25th, 2024. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Okay, that is it for our regular business. We do have a tabled item. Is there a motion to remove that from the table?
I'm going to remove the item from the table, number thirty-three.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to remove item number thirty-three from the table, and that would be the City of Mission revoking power of attorney granted to Christopher Navarete. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. And this would be resolution number what? I don't know.
This would be 1929.
1929. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number 1929 as presented, granting the power of attorney to Jorge Joel Flores. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. And that is the end of our business. We have routine matters next.
Madam Mayor, Commission, or Council, we have Halloween Move to Full Yard Contest, which is gonna be announced on tomorrow. We also have Halloween Spooktacular Thursday, October 31st, at the Mission Event Center from 6 to 8, and that's open to everyone. Dia de los Muertos, you heard that, at the museum on Saturday, November the 2nd. We have the Veterans Day appreciation. We have a number of things going on. You might wanna check our website. We have a 5K run at 7:00 a.m. We have a Veterans Day parade from 12 to 1. We have an appreciation barbecue at Mission Park and Rec from 2 to 4. We have festivities at the seed building from 2 to 6. And then we have the Fall Sweep Roundup, which is bulky item entire collection, November the 16th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 at 1400 South Conway. Proof of residency would be required, either driver's license or utility bill. That's it, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Council comments? Ms. Jess?
So I can't believe we're already October. This year has gone by so fast. I just wanna wish everybody a happy Halloween with their family. I hope you all spend it well, full of candies, and don't forget to go vote. It's very important so that we can make time to go vote. Thank you.
No comments, thank you.
No comments, thank you.
No comments.
No? Okay. All I'm gonna say is, is, so we did meet with, with our police department as, as a council. I wanna thank you guys for, for, for allowing us to do that, and, and I just wanna wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween. And that's it for now, so the next items are executive session. Is there a motion? Make a motion to... There's a motion and a second to go into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 and 551.071. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll be right back.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
How more to reconvene?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, on item number one. I don't think there's no action on that. Item number two.
I make a motion to approve the resolution as discussed in executive session.
And that's resolution number 1930.
Resolution 1930. And there's a motion by Ms. Jessica and a second by Beto to approve resolution 1930. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And that would be it.
No, you're the one that was added on at the very end.
Okay.
And that's to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Oh, the other added item.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion as discussed in executive session to proceed after discussion with the city manager and the city attorney with planning staff.
Okay.
Got it.
Second. There's a motion and a second to proceed as discussed in executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Right, there being no other business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero. Thank you, everybody.